It is 6:03 PM. This hearing of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission will please come to order. It is October 21st, 2011, and we are in Globe, Arizona. Won't you all please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for coming out on this fine evening to meet with us, and we look forward to hearing your comments later tonight. Before I begin with any of our introductions, I'd like to comply with federal law. We have translation services available, and I would like to ask first our Spanish translator, Francisco Melendez, to come up to the podium and read an announcement in English and Spanish offering those services.
Commissioner Freeman, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, in accordance with the Voting Rights Act, translator interpreter will be available to all the public hearings in order to provide translating interpreting services that might be needed for those citizens that need translating or interpreting services. Please contact your translator, President of this ministry so that he can assist you. President Freeman, comisionados damas y caballeros, de acuerdo con la ley de los derechos electorales, un traductor e intérprete estará disponible en todas las reuniones de audiencia pública a fin de proporcionar la traducción interpretación que puedan ser necesarios para los ciudadanos que necesiten servicios de traducción o interpretación. Por favor contacte al introductor presente en esta audiencia para que él le pueda ayudar.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite Josephine Good to read a similar announcement in Apache.
No one's Apache here. No, I'm just teasing. Here, Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission. De cunca hi inde llai estan baxt ne ichu ito hi gus ani bi itsa iritsari yeti ge guliro lel. Guse hadi do ina bi eti do yegusidahi eba itsa juditsako. Go hanti link e ruwansida yo sida kianchi ana ko la ita hi.
Thank you. Well, again, welcome, everyone. This hearing is part of round two of the public comment hearings the commission has conducted. This round of public comment is designed to get input on the two draft maps that the commission has published, the congressional draft map and the legislative draft map. My name is Scott Freeman. I'm one of the five commissioners. I serve as vice chair to my right as Commissioner Richard Sturts. The other commissioners, not all commissioners, attend these public comment hearings. We've got 26 of them scheduled over about a three-week period, so it's not really feasible for all of us to come to every single hearing. But this hearing, like all our other hearings, is recorded on video. It is live streamed over the Internet, and I know the few hearings I haven't been able to make it to, I've watched from either my office or home, and I'm sure our other commissioners, our Chair Colleen Mathis, our co-vice chair Jose Herrera, and Commissioner Linda McNulty will be watching this either at their homes or at their leisure because it is recorded and preserved on the Internet. I'd like to continue with a few other introductions. To my left is the commission's legal counsel, Mary O'Grady, our commission's voting rights consultant, Bruce Adelson. To my right is Corinne Belloc, who is from Strategic Telemetry, the mapping consultant firm for the commission. We have behind that box over there Buck Forrest, our technology, actually, I'm not sure what his title is, technology expert. Everything that is being said today has become part of the commission's record and has been taken down by our court reporter Marty Herter. And we have our Assistant Executive Director Christina Gomez sitting in the room with us. And then I think outside, as you came in, you probably met our public outreach experts, Shane Shields and Karen Herman. And any of our staff is available to help you with anything, answer any questions you might have. And in addition, after we wrap up tonight, I'm happy to stay as late as we need to if anyone wants to talk and ask questions. The purpose of today is to get comments from you, so we sit and listen and hear what your thoughts are on the draft maps. Before we get to that, I'd like to turn the program over to Ms. Belloc, who's going to give a brief presentation about the redistricting process and how we've gotten to the point we are now.
Yes, good evening. I'm Corinne Cabina-Belloc with Strategic Telemetry. I'm happy to be here this evening in Globe to discuss the draft congressional and legislative maps presented by the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission. The goal of these meetings is to hear comments from you about these draft maps, so thank you for taking the time to attend on a Friday evening. The draft maps that you'll see today are currently under a 30-day review period, so the commission can hear your opinion about these maps. So before I get into the maps, I want to give you a quick overview of the redistricting process. So Arizona's redistricting process is governed by the state constitution as amended by the voters in 2000 with the passage of Proposition 106. It stipulates that the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission must redraw Arizona's congressional and legislative districts to reflect the most recent census. Due to the 2010 census, Arizona gained a congressional seat going from eight seats to nine seats. So a little bit about the requirements of the state constitution via Prop. 106. New district boundaries must comply with the U.S. Constitution and the Voting Rights Act. They must have equal population, and criteria A and B are federally mandated. And then, to the extent practicable, the districts must be compact and contiguous, respect communities of interest, use visible geographic features, city, town, and county boundaries, and undivided census tracts, and favor competitive districts where no significant detriment to other goals. So just a bit about the Voting Rights Act now. So Arizona's congressional and legislative districts must receive preclearance or approval from the Department of Justice or federal court under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act before they can take effect. To get preclearance, Arizona must demonstrate that the new districts do not discriminate against minority voters in purpose or effect, which means there can be no incidental, intentional or accidental discrimination. Under Section 5, Arizona's redistricting plans cannot be retrogressive. The plans cannot weaken or reduce minority voters' rights. And finally, the presence of discrimination can be determined by analyzing population data and election results. So now, I'd like to turn it over to Bruce Adelson, who's advising the commission on Voting Rights Act and preclearance, to give us a few additional words about that.
Thank you, Corinne, and good evening. It's a pleasure to be back in Globe. I thought I'd spend a couple of minutes with you just to explain the federal requirements. I had been a senior attorney for the United States Department of Justice nine years ago when the department objected to or blocked Arizona's legislative redistricting plan. My team wrote the letter in May 2002 that stopped the redistricting process on the legislative side, because in our examination, we found illegal discrimination against the rights of minority voters to elect whom they wanted to office. In order for your plan to go into effect and for you to have legislative elections next year, the Department of Justice or the federal court in Washington, D.C. must approve or preclear the plan. That's a federal law. The federal law cannot be avoided or minimized. All of the criteria that you have under the state constitution, such as compactness, keeping communities of interest together, continuity, and competitiveness, take second place to the federal criteria. Federal criteria must be adhered to for the department to preclear. If they're not, they will object like we did nine years ago, and the plan will not be put into effect. So I thought it might be helpful for you to hear from my perspective tonight as a former federal law enforcement officer how the Department of Justice looks at your redistricting plan and how federal law requires the process that we've discussed as far as preclearance. Thank you very much.
Yes, so moving on, before we get into the maps, just a little bit more about the timeline of the commission. So earlier this year, Step 1, the commission was established, and the commissioners were appointed following a thorough screening process and served in a voluntary role for the state of Arizona. This evening, of course, we have Vice Chair Scott Freeman and Richard Sturts, and the other commissioners, Jose Herrera, Colleen Mathis, Chair, and Linda McNulty are watching on livestream, I'm sure. And then to the second round, Step 2 is the first round of hearings. So before drawing a single line that you'll see this evening, the commission held 23 public hearings around the state in July and August to get input from members of the public about issues related to redistricting, such as geography, communities of interest, minority voting rights, and competitiveness. At that point, the mapping began after those first round of hearings, and per Proposition 106, the commission started with a blank slate, which we'll talk about a little bit more later. They then divided the state into equal population in compact grid-like districts, and the grid map was approved on August 18th. Since adopting the maps, the commission has met over more than 25 times to consider adjustments to the grid to accommodate all of the state constitutional criteria, and during this time, they also received additional input from the public and draft maps from the public as well. Approval of the draft maps came after that. On October 3rd, the commission approved a draft congressional map that incorporated changes based on all of the constitutional criteria, and they approved a draft legislative map on October 10th. Which brings us to the second round of hearings. Currently, the commission is visiting 25 cities and towns across the state to share the draft maps and receive additional input during the month of October and November. Step 5 is the final maps are taken into account. So upon completion of a public comment period, the ARAC will adopt the final maps. And then Step 6, which Bruce spoke about, is the preclearance process. So because Arizona, again, is subject to Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, the district maps must be approved by the federal Department of Justice or the federal court in Washington, D.C. before they can be used for Arizona's elections. So just moving on to the maps, to show how the commission came to the draft maps that you'll see, we'll show you a progression of the maps. So the map you see here was the congressional map that was used during the last redistricting commission, that was approved by the last redistricting commission. It was most recently used in the 2010 elections. Per Proposition 106, the commission was required to start with a blank slate, which you see here, and they could not take into consideration any previous election districts or incumbents. So after Proposition 1, also per Proposition 106, after the blank slate, the commission developed a grid map, as I touched on earlier. The grid map takes into account only two considerations of the six criteria, equal population and compactness. So in August, the commission asked that two grid maps be drawn, and on August 18th, they agreed upon Option 2, which you see here. So after more than 25 meetings, the commission voted to approve the draft map on the screen. In addition to taking into consideration the six constitutional criteria, the commission took into consideration public comment provided via public meetings, round one of the public hearings, comments mailed, emailed, hand-delivered, faxed, and telephoned into the commission, basically any form of communication that they could get, and over 5,000 comments helped to develop the draft map you see. Some of the highlights of the map, just to touch on briefly for you. The draft map that you see here today creates two predominantly rural districts. It creates three border districts. It creates three districts in the greater Tucson area, five districts that are entirely within Maricopa County. It avoids splitting Arizona's Indian reservations, and it creates two districts where minority voters have the opportunity to elect the candidate of their choice. So moving on from the congressional draft map, the same process, very similar process was followed for the legislative draft map. So what you see here is the legislative map from the last commission, which was last used in the 2010 election. Again, per Proposition 106, they moved on to the blank slate map, which you see, and then the legislative grid map. Again, the grid map was approved in August, the legislative grid map, and similar to the congressional map, the grid map took only into consideration equal population and compactness, which leads to the legislative draft map. Arizona has 30 legislative districts, and each district elects one senator and two House members. Some other points about the legislative draft map to share with you tonight. The commission took into account population growth and reduction. So old districts ranged from 155,000 to 378,000 in population. The current draft map ranges from 207,000 to 215,000. To comply with the Voting Rights Act, the draft plan includes 10 districts in which minority voters should have the opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice. The draft map also includes three districts wholly within Pima County and three additional districts in southern Arizona districts, so three additional southern Arizona districts. It created 17 districts primarily within Maricopa County and nine districts that are predominantly rural. So as we mentioned, the commission definitely wants to hear what you have to say about these draft maps, so there are many ways to make sure that your voice is heard. You can fill out a request-to-speak form at a public hearing and provide the commission with your input. Example of input might include your thoughts on constitutional criteria or the congressional or legislative maps that you've seen tonight. You can also submit your input by speaking at a hearing, filling out public input forms on the AIRZ Arizona Redistricting Commission website. And just to give you that web address, sometimes I forget to move the slide. Sorry about that. So just the last piece here is you can visit the website at azredistricting.org or call 602-542-5221 or toll-free at 855-733-7478. Again, that's azredistricting.org. So the commission also definitely wants to make sure that you can stay connected throughout this process, and the website is a great place to do this. This is a screenshot of the commission's website. The arrows highlight a couple of key areas of interest. So under Meetings, you can find future and past meetings. If you would like to see the deliberation that went into the draft maps, you can go and view the video from any date of those previous meetings. If you would like to make comments, you can always use the public input forum online and submit it that way. And then finally, if you'd like to view the maps, you can go to Maps, and there are a couple of ways to do it. At the bottom, the bottom arrow will take you directly to the draft maps. And so an example of, as you click on those links there, the next screen that you're going to see is this. It's a little small, but what it basically has are all the file formats for the different types of maps, for the maps. So it might have a JPEG file, or a PDF file, or the Google Map file. The KMZ Google link is circled in red, and that will take you to the Google Map version of the draft maps, which I'll show you in a moment. And it's on this screen, actually. So you click on that link that says KMZ on this screen, and then you're brought to a zoomed-out version of Arizona where you can view the districts. Google Maps is a great way to view the maps, the districts lines that have been drawn, because you can zoom in and out to specific areas or boundaries that you're interested in looking into. So what you see on the screen now is the draft congressional map. On the left, you have an ability to turn on or off several different types of features. You can turn off filters for counties. You can turn off different colors if you'd only like to focus on one district in particular. Basically, turning off those filters just allows you to view the area you want to look at much more closely. So that's the screen there. Then as you zoom in, which I mentioned, which is the great thing about Google Maps, is you can see exactly what you're looking for. So this slide shows you a zoomed-in look on some of the districts surrounding Maricopa County. And again, you have the ability to zoom in and out, down to street level, your block, so you can see exactly where those boundaries run in your area. So finally, as I wrap this up, I want to highlight the commission's website one more time, azredistricting.org. On the website, you can also, in addition to the things we talked about, you can draw maps, you can watch meetings, and you can find out details about future meetings. You can also, if you're into social media, you can follow us on Twitter with the hashtag #AIRC, or you can friend us on Facebook, and they'll get constant updates there up to the minute. So in conclusion, thank you again for coming out tonight to be a part of this process. A final point on these maps, copies can be found in the packet you received tonight, and we also have poster-sized versions hanging in the back of the room for both the congressional and legislative maps, so you can see them a bit more clearly that way as well. And I'm available after the public comment period. If you have any questions regarding the maps, or any question regarding how to access or the mapping process, please feel free to speak with me, and you can also talk to any of the staff here if you have questions about the maps or how to access those from the commission's website in particular. So I look forward to speaking with you, and thanks for having us tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Belloc. Before we get to public comment, I want to make sure I say this if I neglected to do so at the beginning. I really want to thank Hila County and the Hila County Board of Supervisors and the Town and City Globe for hosting us here today. It's my privilege to be up here. It was a beautiful drive coming up here, and I sort of regret the fact that I'll be driving back home in the dark, but not to get to see it on the way back. But we'll go to public comment now. I have 10 request-to-speak forums, and if you do want to address the commission, we'd ask that you please fill out one of these yellow request-to-speak forums. They should be available on the table just outside the door you came in. If you don't want to come to the microphone and speak to us tonight, you can still provide comments. The package you received should have this blue form in the back, and it asks you for information, and you can provide written comments that way, and you can leave it with Ms. Gomez before you leave, or you can take it home and complete it at home and mail it to the commission. Or like Ms. Belloc said, you can get on our website. There is a forum there where you can actually provide comments through the website. For public comment, what we'll do is, because it looks like I have about 10 now, I'd ask that everyone sort of limit your comments to about five minutes, and Buck, will you be able to time it? And I think he's got a buzzer. If it goes off, don't worry, just try to wrap it up, so we're fair to everyone. And when you come to the microphone, please don't be shy about wrestling that microphone and getting it right up to your mouth so that we can hear you and our court reporter can hear you, and people watching in the livestream can hear you. And state your name and then spell it, so we get an accurate record. And if I haven't already said so in announcing you, just tell us who you're here representing, yourself or some other organization, and where you're from, just county or town. Don't give us, we don't need a street address. And with that, I'd ask our first speaker to come to the microphone, State Representative Lynn Pancrazie, who is from Yuma and representing her constituents.
Lynn Pancrazie, L-Y-N-N-E, Pancrazie, P-A-N-C-R-A-Z-I, or Z-Y, depending on the I am here representing my constituents. Rural Arizona makes up 22% of the state of Arizona, and it's very important that we have rural legislators. When it's spoken that predominantly rural, that doesn't mean that they're from rural districts. It says, the one that I'm concerned about, of course, is Yuma County. Yuma County not only looks like it's going to be split, but it also is going to be attached to Maricopa County. I am very concerned that we will dilute the voice of rural Arizona, and in my case, in Yuma County, we will absolutely silence it, because there is enough, from the numbers, there is enough Maricopa County residents to be able to swing the elections, and the voice of rural Arizona and Yuma County will not be heard. So that's why I'm here. I'm asking you to please tweak those maps so that Yuma County and several others are actual rural counties. They have rural representatives. There are 15 of us now at the legislature, and we meet. We get together regardless of party and make sure that the issues for rural Arizona are heard. We can't always make them happen, but we can make sure that they're heard, and without making sure that the rural counties are represented, and we will be silenced, and that will be a detriment to the state of Arizona. So with that, I would appreciate if you would tweak your maps and take Maricopa out of Districts 13 and 4. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next will be Fernando Shipley, Mayor of Globe.
Good evening. My name is Fernando Shipley. That's F-E-R-N-A-N-D-O. Shipley is S-H-I-P-L-E-Y, and I'm here representing the constituents of Globe. We have proposed slightly different maps. I think they've been provided for you. Basically, what we're trying to do is keep our districts pretty much as intact as we can. One of the things that we also did to modify the map slightly is that we looked at communities of interest. We considered that mining communities should be considered a community of interest. So if you'll look at that map, you'll see that we also proposed to bring in Superior, Hayden, Winkelman, and Kearney. I am aware that Kearney has endorsed a different plan that puts him into Penal County, but we basically looked at mining as a very important aspect to our community. We'd like to have representation that is sensitive to those needs and rural Arizona. We have several communities that have endorsed these plans, as well as City of Globe has also endorsed those plans, so we'd just like you to consider them. We're just concerned, as is the representative, that rural voices would be diluted. If we go into metro areas and then spread out, that we think we'll end up having metro representatives that don't really need to listen to us to get elected, and that's a big concern to us. Rural areas have a lot of common issues, common concerns, and we'd like to see some rural representation. So thank you very much for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you. And Mayor, did you have maps with you tonight that you provided?
Yes, Mr. Bryan has maps, and he can make sure we can get those to you, so.
Great, and I should have mentioned, if anyone has any written materials or maps they'd like to submit, they can get them to Ms. Gomez, and the commission will receive it, and it'll become part of our record. Next speaker will be Steve Earhart, Councilman, Town of Eager.
My name is Steve Earhart. I'm here representing the Town of Eager. And I want to thank you first for all your work on the redistricting. I know it's a pretty difficult task, and I would like to present to you a resolution of the mayor and council of the Town of Eager urging you, the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission, to keep rural Arizona together by considering and adopting the proposed district maps that we have provided. I think it's the same ones. The legislative district, Option 1, Version 8A, supported by our resolution, is the best choice for Eager and many other areas represented here tonight. Our mining, ranching, and timber resources are of interest to us all and are the lifeblood of many of our communities. We share those interests and should be able to elect people to serve us with those common interests. After the Wallo Fire, it's more important than ever for us in eastern Arizona to be united in our legislative representation, and that's what we believe Option 1, Version 8A, does for us. I'd also like to voice a few concerns about your congressional district map, if you could, any way you could put it up. It seems to me that out of 13 rural counties, we should be able to form at least two truly rural congressional districts. We have over 1.5 million people in rural Arizona. That should be enough to form at least two rural congressional districts without including us with Metro Phoenix or Metro Tucson. Apache County should be tied to an area that we share more interest and commonality with. I'm concerned that Congressional District 1, as you have mapped, is tied to the suburban area of Tucson, like Morana, Oro Valley, and Saddle Brook. In fact, it appears that all nine congressional districts are linked to Metro Phoenix or Metro Tucson in some fashion. We feel this takes away competitiveness, and we in the rural areas want to have a voice and want to be able to elect a candidate from rural Arizona. We don't want to be controlled by any single metropolitan area. I'm concerned that five counties are split up. Penal, Cochise, Hila, Pima, and Yavapai Counties are chopped up in what appears to be an effort to keep Coconino County whole for some reason. to keep Coconino County whole, for some reason. And as you said earlier, our constitution says that when practicable, district lines shall be visible geographic features, city-town, and county boundaries, and undivided census tracts. And that's not what I see here. If there is really a desire to give rural Arizona a voice, don't put us with Pima County, that we share nothing with. And I just want to close by saying the Town of Eager supports the proposed eastern rural congressional district that you've got from us now in resolution form. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker I have is Chip Wilson, Councilmember, City of Apache Junction.
I'm Chip Wilson, C-H-I-P, Wilson, W-I-L-S-O-N. City Councilmember from Apache Junction. Want to voice my opinion for my constituents, and as well as our neighbors of Gold Canyon, Santan Valley, and the eastern part of Queen Creek. We do not understand why we've been included in District Four, the Colorado River Communities. I could not attend the meeting that was done in Chandler, so I, this past Tuesday, so I drove up here to represent my constituents and talk to you concerning this. On my way up here, I passed through, of course, Superior, and then into Miami and Globe. And in actuality, Apache Junction has more in common with these communities, because there's a lot of our people that have worked, or currently worked, in the copper industry. With the possibility of Resolution Copper opening, and new opportunities, even more of our citizens will be working in this endeavor. We also have Empire Industries. They are looking at providing a lot of the equipment, and that's inside our city as We're even coming to recreation. We're not in common with what the river communities are. I myself have, live inside the city, but we also have a rural part of our community, and I own horses. And there's a lot of us in the entire area that own horses, and are part of the rural area. That includes the Santan Valley, and the eastern part of Queen Creek. And we believe that we should be kept with part of Pinell County, and all should be part of it, going together. We have seen the proposed map that was given to you by Pinell County Government Alliance. And as elected officials from the City of Apache Junction, we support this proposed map. I understand that you have included an area in District, included us in the District Area Four, because Flagstaff Area did not want to be included in the western district. Really and truthfully, our population is actually bigger than the Flagstaff Area, and we don't feel that our inputs, our concerns, were involved in this. We feel that District Four does not meet four of the requirements given to this commission. Of course, that's compactness, computed communities of interest, geological features, and competitiveness. Over in competitiveness is really, in a sense, is you look at the voting record, and it's become a very, I'll say, Republican district very heavily. We are a community that share our interests and our recreational pleasures with the rural areas of Pinell County. And we ask that you look at this and take us into very serious consideration. We want to thank you for all your work that you're doing, and we feel that our input is taken seriously, and we hope that we will have a better map in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. Hope you all are having a good evening. My name is George Lemon, G-E-O-R-G-E-L-E-M-E-N. I'm the mayor of the Town of Pima. We, the Town of Pima, sent you guys a letter about two months ago, with our own drawing of what we would like to have had done in this redistricting. We don't feel like the maps that you have now, you took into consideration the community of interest. We're rural. We drive by cotton fields to go to work in our town, or in our mine, or in the other mine over in Greenlee County. One map associates us with South Phoenix, the other map associates us with South Tucson. And that's, neither of those are good. We go to Tucson to the doctor. We go to Phoenix to the doctor. Sometimes we go for a real good meal, sometimes we go, so my wife can shop somewhere other than Walmart, but hey. But that's the way it is. We don't associate with those people in those cities, except for my one son. They come out to us for a little bit of recreation, and then they go back, and they leave us their junk. We don't feel like this is a really good situation. And, you know, we think that you did take into consideration three of the things that you were supposed to, but we don't think that you've taken that one into consideration at all. So thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. I'll leave this map with her again, and.
Thank you. Next speaker is James, and I'm sorry, I can't read the last name, McCownly? Is that even close? Looks like representing self from Globe.
That was very close. It's McCownly, M-C-C-A-W-L-A-Y, James, common spelling. I would like to say I appreciate the work that everybody's been putting in on this. I can't imagine the, almost impossibility of trying to please everybody. And I know that many people here in the Globe area and in Hila County are not pleased, including myself. On the first map, the congressional map, we're split in two. Hila County is a small county, not too populous. It has a very large attraction for each other. The north part and the southern part of the county fight quite a bit. But when it comes to the county, we're all one county, and we know it. And we're proud of it. But now we're split in two. One of us, the southern half of the county, goes into District One, Congressional District One, and the northern half goes in, I think, pardon me, goes into four. But even worse than that is the one with the legislative map, where we're cut into three portions. Like I say, it's a small county. We're less than a hundred miles went into the other, anywhere from probably thirty miles one side to the other. So about three hundred square miles, a small. And our population is, what, under a hundred thousand people? And we're cut into three. That loses, gives us a complete loss of power when it comes down to the state. And it cuts our power in Congress, because we're, in the southern part of the county here, we'd be voting with Pinell County, as far as the state legislature is concerned. And the northern half would be voting with the large group runs almost around to Yuma. I'm not blaming or saying that the commission gerrymandered, but that came up with a, I think in the 1930s, where somebody drew up a map of the redistricting, and it looked like a dragon to him, and they called it gerrymandered. I don't think you did. I see what you're trying to do. You're trying to keep the reservations together. That's good. We also think counties deserve to be together as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Michael Hing, Mayor of the Town of Superior, representing his constituents.
My name is Michael Hing, M-I-C-H-A-E-L, last name H-ing. I am the mayor of the Town of Superior. We have proposals, as Mayor Shipley of Globe had mentioned, of these proposed maps of, start off with the legislative districts, that we're currently in Legislative Twenty Three, and, you know, I don't want to look at the new maps, because the numbers all changed, but to move to like Legislative Number Five. Because the more our District Twenty Three is growing, we are, we're more and more being disconnected. If you're not familiar with the Town of Superior, it's a mining talent, and possibly going to open one of the largest underground operations in North America, an ore body that is. And so we begin to feel a disconnect with Legislative Twenty Three, because currently two representatives have come out of the metropolitan areas, like Casa Grande, and in the AJ area, back in Junction. So as I see them, they're part of the metro area, and of course Casa Grande's has basically become the point of interest between Tucson and Phoenix. So there's seemed to be a disconnect with the Town of Superior, and especially the communities on Highway 177, because we share a lot of interest with the rural areas of District, well Legislative District Number Five, which is Globe, Miami, and of course eastern part of the state. And we want to kind of remain in that area, because we want to have, able to have a voice being spoken, rather than being disconnected. So, you know, what the requirements of the state constitution is very clear, and I really say, follow these rules, they're exactly how we feel, because of the representation, the respect of interests of the communities, you know, we're in a resource area, you know, up in this areas, you know, getting into mining, and also timber, you know, cattle, ranching. So we all feel, we're kind of like, excuse me, sorry. But I, to close it up, we support, you know, these proposed new maps, I'll put this in as record. Also, this, the Congressional District, CD One, that we're part of, that do not include Flagstaff. Because putting Flagstaff back into CD One, with the eastern part, does not have any sharedness, what we have, we consider rural. And you mentioned coming up to into this area, you enjoy it. It's the open space, the rural. We already have that sense, that's why we live here. We're productive in our areas, and we want to be able to speak on that level. So thank you again.
Next I have Don Ascoli, representing self from Hila County.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Don Ascoli, A-S-C-O-L-I, from Payson, Arizona. And I'm not representing any group officially. I'm a member of several different organizations, one of which I'll refer to more as Chairman of the Hila County Planning and Zoning Commission. I want to go to the presentation that the young lady gave earlier, and you go to page three, the slide, where the guidelines for Proposition 106 must comply Constitution Voting Rights Act, which I'm going to address at the end, equal population, and to the extent practicable, compact and contiguous, respect communities of interest, and use visible geographical features, city-town, county boundaries, undivided census tracts. I suggest to you gentlemen and the commission that you have, in a way, violated the very guidelines that Proposition 106 requires. This is the map of which several prior speakers talked about, the Eastern Arizona Counties Association map for CD, which I'm going to talk about first, the CD, and then we'll talk about LD districts. And this is what it looks like. Very nice and compact, two genuine rural districts. Two genuine rural, and you've heard the arguments why we should have that, because living in rural Arizona is not like living in downtown Phoenix or Tucson. This is the map, you gentlemen, the commission has approved. And just to show the crowd, I wish it had nice colors, you could see the difference with those two maps. Anyway, compact and contiguous, respect communities of interest, and use visible geographical features. I don't know what the Town of Payson has to do with Parker, Lake Havasu City, and Yuma. There is nothing in common with that area. Nothing in common with it. The prior speakers also talked about in the southern part of this county. That's the map of our county. I'm a resident of that county. I represent that county in the planning and zoning effort of this county. And the CD map has cut us in half, where the map that was proposed by the Eastern County Associations, and I know one of our supervisors of the Hila Counties in here, and I believe he supported, along with the others, has all the eastern counties pretty much all together. And the map that you proposed, that's on the wall there, splits it into pieces, and puts uncommon interest together. When you go to the LD map, it gets worse, not better. There are twelve rural counties in the state of Arizona, for everybody's information. In Option Eight A, Option One Eight A, which was this map here, pretty much kept the districts the way they were for the last ten years, which have worked for this state, the great state of Arizona, the sovereign state, and made the adjustments, because obviously population changes. The map that you proposed, again, puts un, or disinterested, unconnected communities of interest, splits up existing ones, and creates, I don't know how we'll ever become a community of interest in these new maps. There's just, there's just no way. In the case of Hila County, you do the travesty of splitting us in the thirds. We are one of the smallest counties in the state of Arizona, and by bracketing the thirds, and by the way, we're the only county you chose to split in thirds. But by doing that, we become so insignificant to the representative and the senators of that district, we're going to have triple the difficulty of getting their attention in legislative issues. In Option Eight, Option One of Eight A that was originally proposed, was this map here that took kind of what it liked and made some adjustments. Five counties did get split, five rural out of twelve. In the map that you have on the wall over here, you've taken eight of the twelve counties and split them up. It's like you're totally ignoring who we are. You're totally ignoring who we are. How in the world can we conduct business at the state and national level when you split us up? It's a travesty, in my opinion. Now, if you go back to the guidelines, and it says Voting Rights Act, the second paragraph, the slide four says, "Under Section Five, Arizona's redistricting plans cannot be retrogressive. The plans cannot weaken or reduce minority voters' rights." Personally, I believe rural voters are being treated as a minority, and you're splitting our interest up. Now you go to slide. Now you go to slide, I'll get there in a moment, I'm going to get the text right. Pre-clearance, we've heard that mentioned, pre-clearance, Voting Rights, Section 5 pre-clearance. What's it about? I'm going to introduce into the record a legal memorandum titled, "The Bailout, Bait and Switch: DOJ's Last-Ditch Attempt to Rescue Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act." I don't know if the people in this room are aware, but this state could apply for a bailout and be waived from the Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, which is all the grief that we're having to go through. I talked to Linda Islick in, uh, County Elections, basically she spent her last year working solely on preparing for this event. She mentioned that 10 years ago, when we went through the redistricting process, she basically put together one three-and-a-half-inch binder information for DOJ, because back then we still did stuff for DOJ. She's up to seven binders this year. She shared with me that there's a county in Texas that they have, they, the DOJ, has demanded over 50,000 emails as part of the pre-clearance process. And I'm getting to wonder, aren't we a sovereign state? Don't you people represent the people of Arizona, not the federal government? I understand the attorney general has filed a lawsuit declaring Section 5 unconstitutional. I am convinced beyond a shadow of doubt, it's unconstitutional. It applied in 1965. That's 45 years ago, gentlemen and ladies. It does not apply anymore. There's two lawsuits that are close to the Supreme Court right now. I would sure like the state of Arizona to stand up for its rights and saying, "We're not going to comply with that part. We're going to represent the people of Arizona, not comply to, uh, what is an unconstitutional act." I don't want to, um, take time from this, this meeting here, but in the memorandum, they list four very egregious points of anyone who enforces Section 5 of this law, it sticks it to the citizens of that state. And what's happened is we have been intimidated, folks, we have been intimidated by the actions of the DOJ. And if you know who's running it right now, I would question all that. I would question it. But I'm, I just want to read, um, I got my little marker here. Basically, what, what, what they're saying here in this memorandum that I want you to read and put part of the record is that, due to past coercion and the political cost that the DOJ has done to the, the jurisdictions that come under this DAGAM law, we've been intimidated in the not taking a rightful action of saying, "DOJ, we don't want to go through pre-clearance, skip it." There are counties and there are cities in the, in the United States that are already, uh, have applied, haven't been bailed out. I strongly recommend that you, as a commission, representing the people of Arizona, not the DOJ, to say, "This is how we feel about it. What happened 50 years ago doesn't apply today, we have, we've addressed all those issues. We do not apply and request a bailout from the Department of Justice so we can have good districts represented in the national level, CDs, as well as the state level, the L.D. districts." I strongly implore you, as representatives of the people of Arizona, speak for the people. You've heard what you, these folks, you've heard mayors, you've heard councilmen, um, all people of interest, they're not happy with what you see here. And I wouldn't be surprised if you went across, uh, most of the places you've been in Arizona, they weren't happy either. The only person I, the only group I think that's happy from here is the people of Flagstaff. And you know why? I'm sorry. I care about Hila County. A lot of people in this room, it's Hila County, there's people here from Pinal, I heard people from Apache and, and Navajo. Let's deal with those folks, listen to their voice, and let's don't, uh, uh, split up a beautiful county, great people. Thank you.
Next is Jesse Bryant from Globe, representing the Eastern Arizona Ad hoc.
My name is Jesse Bryant, I'm from the city of Globe, and, uh, want to welcome you here, uh, last name spelled B.R.Y.A.N.T., uh, welcome you to Globe, welcome you to, uh, rural Arizona, and, uh, we understand, we understand your purpose and the difficulty of your job. Uh, we realize that, uh, you're doing the best you can do with what you have to do. We invite you to discuss with us, discuss with our communities, discuss with, with our elected representatives on the municipal level, of what serves our interest, that could aid you and save you a lot of time and headache, um, if we could create an environment of cooperation and, uh, and coordinate with one another, uh, instead of you folks doing what you can with, with what little knowledge you have of what the interests are of the various parts of the state, and then coming and listening to us tell you how we disagree with that. The federal mandates given, we understand that, we all accept that, um, communities of interest is probably the most important thing to us, to, to every region, and you're going to hear that term quite a bit. Uh, the maps before you, um, they represent what serves our interest, to give you an idea. We understand that, that, uh, whereas we don't understand everything in the mind of, of those metropolitan areas, those in the metropolitan areas don't understand our mind. And that's why we're here tonight, to try to help you understand that mind. Um, our, our rural region is very important to us, it is, we're, we're here tonight, not as Republicans and Democrats, but as rural Arizonans. Uh, you're here, whether you realize it or not, you're hearing from Republicans, you're hearing from Democrats, some of them elected to something, some of them not. Uh, historically rural Arizona is a competitive region, and that's a strong interest of your commission, we understand that. Well, even the, uh, this legislative map before you is, is, is a very competitive, it's, it's much like what we've had for the last 10 years, and for those 10 years, we've had, we've had Democrats and Republicans, moderate Republicans, conservative Republicans, uh, moderate Democrats, conservative Democrats, or liberal Democrats, uh, elected, uh, from that region, and likewise the congressional district. What, what we, what we did after we began to get wind of the, the draft maps, is our communities began to stand up and speak together. And if you'll bear with me, I'd like to tell you just how many communities have spoken on this issue, and I'd also like to thank, uh, Ms. Gomez too, she's been very helpful to our communities, uh, in receiving the emails and receiving the maps and their resolutions. The resolution that was read before you from Superior and from Eager, those are two of our communities that traveled here, uh, tonight, but across eastern Arizona, we've had 10 communities thus far pass resolutions by their council and forwarding them to your record in Phoenix, um, supporting those maps that are before you now, and five more cities have them on their agendas for next week, and there are more to come. It's just a matter of time of reaching out to everybody. Um, unfortunately, it's a long ways to drive and all of them could be here, um, but we understand that we are of one mind on this matter. Uh, we, as far as, uh, the congressional map is concerned, uh, we understand that Flagstaff has the resources to have spent a lot of time in front of you. Here in rural Arizona, we don't have those resources. However, those 15, soon to be 15 communities agree that Flagstaff is not in our interest. We do not want Flagstaff and we do not want Prescott in our rural region. Uh, the reservations are great. Uh, in our legislative district, uh, the one that's there before you proposes to even add an Apache reservation, along with the White Mountain, San Carlos, and Tonals, we want to add the Yavapai Apache along, along with that, in the Verde Valley area. And, uh, the congressional district, we have the Navajos and the Hopis, we intend to add the Hopis as well. Uh, please understand what we've done. I want to li- I want to name off to the communities for your record, um, so far, we've got the city of Globe, Miami, Superior, Winkelman, Hayden, Duncan, Sholo, Lakeside, Eager, Springerville, and, did I mention Superior? If I mentioned Superior, have passed res- resolution so far. The towns of Snowflake, um, St. John's, Camp Verde, and, uh, haven't got a hold of Taylor, Holbrook and Winslow have it on their agenda for next week, and still got to get a hold of Taylor. Uh, I think I failed to mention Pintop passed it, uh, last night as well. So, uh, we are one mind and we ask you to work with us. We don't have to work against each other, these serve our interests, um, understand it, I, I'm, I'm apologize for how rough the congressional proposal is there before you, but understand there's, there is, uh, uh, outside the federal mandates which those represent, and it does not, in fact, both maps, in fact, slightly increase the minority count for those, those regions, but, uh, the congressional map had two goals, solely rural and the removal of Flagstaff and Prescott from our district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Bryant, did, were these prepared using the commission's online mapping? Next speaker is Leary Alderman, Globe City Councilman.
My name is Larry Alderman, L.E.R.Y. Alderman, A.L.D.E.R.M.A.N., City Councilman for the city of Globe. Uh, also, uh, I'd like to speak on behalf of Hila County. As you've heard before, um, our, our specific interests are mining, timber, cattle, and tourism. Uh, we all share the same, uh, commonality here of those items, and, uh, as I, as I, we have just gone through a redistricting for our city, and I understand how difficult that is, and I want to thank you all for what you do. Uh, you guys are doing a great job, and I really appreciate the fact that you're listening to us tonight. I, uh, I pray that you're, uh, absorbing this information and, uh, we can get it on paper. Uh, we, we all do have, um, interest, like interest, and, uh, we are, um, as it was mentioned, compact and contiguous, respect for communities of interest, uh, use visible geographic features, city-town, county boundaries, and undivided census tracts. We have, uh, the maps that, uh, Mr. Bryant gave you guys, uh, you all, uh, is, um, something that we all, uh, can agree on. You've heard the, the number of communities who are, uh, approving this, making resolutions, accepting this, and, uh, we just feel like we want, uh, representation. We don't want to be split up, and, uh, rural land Arizona, uh, wants a voice. We want that voice, we relish that, uh, ability to do that, and we respectfully ask that you consider rural Arizona and the maps before you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Jose Medina. And if you could please let us know if you're here on behalf of yourself or another group and where you're from.
My name is Jose Angel Medina, J.O.S.E.A.N.G.E.L.M.E.D.I.N.A. Senior. Uh, I apo- I wa- I was going to apologize for being late, late because, uh, and tired, been spending most of the day down in the valley. Uh, and, uh, I was gonna, I thought I was alone on this issue, from what I was, uh, hearing, uh, I'm here to agree with everybody about representation for rural, uh, rural Hila County in Arizona in particular. Uh, anyway, while I was down in the valley, uh, I was trying to think of what I was going to say tonight. While I was in the valley, uh, at one of the local eateries down there, uh, I saw this paper, and, uh, it's an information, uh, Hispanic paper, La Voz, The Voice, and, uh, I found it interesting from what, uh, I understand from reading in it, uh, they are awfully concerned in the valley, minorities are organizing and, uh, trying to support or have minorities support their interest in rural, uh, Arizona. So, I gave you a copy here, and, uh, if you'd like, I can hand another one to you right Uh, I, I'd just like to add that, uh, I come from a, a mechanical background and aviation background. So, uh, in my world, I'm accustomed to symmetry, and, uh, when I work on something or plan on something, I, I expect it to show some kind of symmetry, smoothness, it's very important. Uh, from what I've seen and don't fully understand, but with the help of, uh, my friends here, I'm, I'm getting a better picture. I don't see the symmetry, I don't see the representation, uh, it, it's starting to worry me now. That's why I thought I'd show up and, uh, show support for everyone here that has spoken, uh, in favor of rural Arizona and our concerns. And, uh, well, I believe that's all I have to say for tonight, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next I have Michael Pastor, Supervisor Michael Pastor, Hila County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you for being here. Uh, my name is Michael Pastor, P.A.S.T.O.R., M.I.C.H.A.E.L. I am the District 2 Supervisor for Hila County, which covers the area of southern, uh, Payson to the top of the world, which is a mining area that you came through from Superior. Probably the largest district, uh, for Hila County. We're only a county of 53,000 people. Graham, Hila, uh, Graham, Greenlee, Navajo, um, and Apache are all like-sized counties, rural counties, and basically I'm here just to express my support, uh, for the Rural Eastern Arizona Coalition map. It keeps Hila County whole. Uh, we really, we really don't want to see ourselves split up, and you've heard that from everybody here. Uh, I know that you guys have struggled, uh, immensely with this redistricting project because the county just finished doing ours since, uh, we've, we've been working since March with Mr. Adelson and his staff, and we finally were able to come to an agreement and submit a map, so we're, we're awaiting clearance hopefully, but I would encourage you to look at this proposal from the rural coalition counties, uh, really consider the , the community of interest that, that exists, uh, to be, uh, partnered or attached to an urban community such as, uh, eastern Pinal, uh, western Pinal, western Pinal County, uh, doesn't do us a whole lot of service. Uh, I think the, uh, southern, uh, parts of Pima County are included too, and that doesn't really serve rural Arizona. So, if you'd look at those maps, we would appreciate it, and, uh, I thank you for your effort as, uh, working on the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Barbara McGuire, representing self.
Members of the commission, my name is Barbara McGuire. I'm a former state representative for Legislative District 23. I have had the pleasure of serving that district for, um, over the past six years, representing 350,000 constituents in that district, part of it, which was a small part of Hila County. Um, I am a rural gal, born, uh, lived all my life here, have families that go back to the 1800s, uh, in the state of Arizona, in this area, in this rural area. I'd like to, uh, show my support for the comments that Mayor Shipley, uh, and many of the gentlemen and ladies in this community, or in this room have made, that live in these communities, uh, along with, uh, Mayor from Superior, Mayor Hing from Superior. Um, I'd just like to add a little bit to that, um, uh, with regards to these rural communities that are of mining, ranching, uh, farming, we also have some light manufacturing down in the Casa Grande area, such as the Frito-Lay, uh, some vitamin companies, tortilla manufacturing companies, uh, also included in these areas. Um, these are homegrown, having generation after generation grow up and live, work, and retire, uh, in these rural areas. Um, I'd also like that, a comment with regards to, uh, at the legislature, the, the voice of- I'd also like that, a comment with regards to, at the legislature, the, the voice of rural representation in and of itself at the legislature is that of a minority. The urban communities and urban representation outnumber us, and I was fortunate to be able to open doors that in the past had been closed to us, to make a difference for these rural communities, and I'd like to see that continue. But with the proposed number eight, the district number eight that you're now proposing, I don't see that Saddle Brook, Catalina, or Oro Valley have anything in common with this copper corridor and its communities. It makes more sense to have other parts of Pinal County like Eloy, Apache Junction, Casa Grande, Globe, Miami for the Hila area, and I heard someone mention the, the reservation, the Apache Indian Reservation. And in the past, in District 23, I had the honor of representing four of the Native American tribes, and I was very pleased to be able to do that, and learned a lot in that experience in representing them and their needs, and the urban environments that you're wanting to mesh into these rural environments do not have anything in common with them as well as these rural farming and ranching communities. These foundations, these rural areas need to have a foundation with a balanced voting mix, and I think the communities that I've mentioned to you would create that balance, or help to create that balance. This is a great opportunity to create a very strong rural district with the interests of all these people here and others that live in these rural districts, to keep them similar. This copper corridor area, to me, all my life, has been the heart-pumping blood of these rural areas, and I'd like to see it remain intact, and as such, I don't think that, that merging the urban environments into these rural environments is in the best interest of these areas. And I'd like to thank you for giving me the time to speak to you here today. I'd really like to commend you on all the work that you've been doing. I've been following online, trying to watch everything on the internet as it unfolds. Your job is a very, very hard one. I, I wholeheartedly commend you. I wish you the very best, and, and I'm very optimistic for the outcome that we will have, that it will be a fair and balanced outcome that will represent everyone in the best interest, especially in the rural areas. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That, we have one more request to speak for? And the winner is Diana Wheeler. From, from Hila County, and, representing self.
My name is Diana Wheeler, D-I-A-N-A-W-H-E-E-L-E-R. I'm speaking for myself, but my husband would be here, he's on the City, Globe City Council, and he's also a ranching consultant, and he's up in Springerville right now. My feel, and my concern is, we are in a crisis situation right now here in the county, or in, in our district, fighting to continue with ranching, timber, mining, and we're beginning to get a foothold because we're all working together. And we're talking about coordination now, and we're making different entities come and sit down to the table, which is, which is mainly the Forest Service and the environmental groups. If you split us up into little bit-sized pieces like you've got on those maps, we won't have a chance. What's left of ranching will be gone, timber is already gone, and we're trying to bring it back right now. You will set us so far back, and it'll be tragic. Everybody's really feeling good about what's going on right now, and we are really working hard as a whole entity. Please don't chop us up. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that was my last request to speak. Is there anyone else who wants to address the commission? Anyone more? If we could get you to complete a request to speak form two, you can do it perhaps after you make your comment, just so we have it on our record.
Good evening. My name is Michael Castro Bingochea Hing, and I'm, I'm here just as a common citizen, and my last name is, it's spelled M-I-C-H-A-E-L. Bingochea is B-I-N-G-O-C-H-E-A, and last name Hing, H-I-N-G. I'm here to speak tonight because the great state of Arizona is built on the four seas, copper, cotton, citrus, and cattle, cattle, okay? And we're, we seem to forget, as the metropolis grows, that once the valley was farming. And you take away, if you go to this, this plan, you're forgetting the heart of our state. And right now, we're mighty, we're, we're not mighty as population-based, but as our mining industries, we make a ton of money for, for the state and the federal government. If you put us into the urban, you're going to choke us, because as you put the, the urban to have a voice, they're going to have a stronger voice than we do. And what good does it do us? We work together with environment, we work with, with environmental people, but if, if you close us down by chopping us into these little pieces, nobody wins. And you have to really take it hard that everybody in this room works hard for what they got, and you're going to close the avenue for all the residents of, of the state of Arizona, because without taxes and money coming in, who's going to win? We want to keep our state productive. We want to be a state that's heard. Look, we've added another representative. Let us keep growing. Don't choke us. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the commission? Well, all right then. Thank you again for coming. That'll close the public comment portion of the program. Before we adjourn, I'd like to ask Commissioner Sturz if he'd like to have any words.
Yes. First, thank you very much for coming out. There's not much that I disagree with that was said tonight. I'm the, I, I, one member of a five-member commission, and in both of these two maps, I voted against them. So what I'm going to encourage you to do is that someone, someone said earlier that, that you were outlobbied by some other groups. If you truly want to become a voice, you need to mobilize your voice, and combine, small cities become big voices when they're combined together. The 30-day comment period is coming to a close. I'm suggesting that if you want to get your voice together, that you gather everyone that you can gather and get that voice heard, because if it is not part of the record, it's not going to be considered. And that's just, that is how this process works. We take a look at the six points in the Constitution, we have to evaluate them accordingly, and it's based on what we are given. And if we are given a big stack of information about one thing and a small stack of information about another, the big stack is going to have a lot more consideration than the small. So the two-week, the comment period for 30 days comes to a close in the next couple of weeks. So as you want to become from small, from small voices, become together, become a very loud mobilized group. So I'm going to encourage you, if you want to be heard as that large group, to bring together your small groups to become a large group, and to do it quickly, so that you, there can be an equal level of consideration. Because I look at geographic issues that we see in some of these maps, and I scratched my head, and I put it on public comment when I, when I said that I did not approve of, of some of these maps, where you could not go from Apache Junction and go, you had to go through three other congressional districts to be able to get, by road, to be able to get to the northern half of that congressional district. So I will be one of those that will be hoping that you, as members of these areas, come out, because my voice is only my voice. I will, I'm right now part of the small stack of information. So I'm going to encourage you to, if you want to get heard, that you get heard and get heard quickly. So I wanted to thank you very much for coming out tonight, and by the way, thank you for Hila County and the Board of Supervisors for welcoming us today.
You're saying that you want to hear us heard, is it?
We have, we have opportunity for you to submit information about what your concerns are to azredistricting.org. You can go online, you can send emails, you can submit testimony as you've done tonight, you can have blue sheets, you can have communities as you've done currently where you have got cities, you've listed 10 cities, I think there was 11, including Pine Top last night, that have actually passed resolutions. There are other cities that, that if, that it is, it is incumbent upon members of the public, there's six and a half million people living in this state. We've had 5,000 pieces of information, Christina plus, 5,000 plus pieces of information that have been delivered to us. It, it'll make Christina crazy, what I just said, but it's incumbent for us to hear everybody now, because in two weeks from now, the now is over, and we're only going to be considering the information, the data, and the testimony that we've been given, and then it'll be left up to the five commissioners to hash it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sturz. I couldn't agree more. I was, I was born and raised in Phoenix, I spent some time of my life in Tucson, I certainly can't claim to be from rural Arizona, but I do spend a lot, I have during my lifetime spent a lot of time, particularly in eastern Arizona, in the White Mountains area, and I, and even now, I, I'm a wannabe hunter, perhaps, I go up quite often. So a lot of what was said tonight resonates with me. We've heard a lot of public comment about keeping rural districts truly rural. In fact, before we began the proceedings tonight, I had a brief conversation with Representative Pan Kranzi from, from Yuma about how even introducing a small percentage of population that is from an urban area into a rural district, and trying to call it a predominantly rural district doesn't quite work, because it's very easy for that population, that urban population to dominate and destroy that rural community of interest. So that does mean a lot to me. In developing, in going forward with these draft maps, a number of the commissioners emphasized repeatedly on the record that they were only drafts, and that there would be changes after the public comment period was, was over. So I believe it is very incumbent upon all the commission as a body to, to take into consideration all the public comment from all parts of the state, and evaluate it and weigh it, and then go back to the drawing board with these maps, and with those public comments in hand, apply the six constitutional criteria the way they should be, and develop true final maps, and that's what will be my goal going forward. So that's all I have, and thank you all again for coming, and so we'll conclude the hearing at six, or excuse me, 7:26 PM.